Following the meeting, please rise and join us for the Fledge of Allegiance. And I'll also invite you to remain standing for a moment in silence as we remember members of the community who have passed away and their families. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now I would like to introduce our school committee members and administration in attendance this evening. On my left, we have Mr. Diemerino, Mrs. Martelli, Mrs. Conrad LaBarento, Mr. Powers, the acting superintendent. On my right, we have Emerson Kilbski, the co-chair of the Student Advisory Council, Mrs. King, Mr. Fitzgibbons, Mr. Dolan, Mr. Marrera, the vice chair, and myself, Mrs. Holbrook, the chair. We also have in attendance Ms. Liz Berry, the acting assistant superintendent, Ms. Tola Bablola, the business manager, Mr. Michael Schontz, the IT director, and Mrs. Judy McDougall, the recording secretary, and other members of the admin team are also in attendance. Next on the agenda, we have public comment. The school committee welcomes information, concerns, and opinions from those attending the meeting. In order to give those wishing an opportunity to speak, ensure compliance with open meeting law and other legal obligations, and avoid disruption of the meeting, the committee will not engage with the speaker or with one another in deliberation on comments as they are presented during comment periods. At its discretion, the committee may schedule presented issues raised by a speaker for deliberation at future meetings. If you would like a personal response, please email the committee or Mr. Powers directly following the meeting. The chair will now open public comment for a period of 12 minutes for policy VEDH, and would ask anyone who wishes to speak to please approach the podium, provide your name and address, and respectfully ask you that you please limit your comments to three minutes. When your three minutes are up and you still have not finished, I will ask that you submit your thoughts for script to our recording secretary, Mrs. McDougall, and she will distribute it to the committee for our review. We will open public comment at 7:04. Is there anyone who would like to address the committee? Okay, so we will close public comment at 7:04. Next on our agenda, we have community emails and correspondences. Each month, I will continue to report on emails and correspondences from members of the school community. This month, the school committee received emails ranging in topic to include an inquiry regarding entrance age as well as a concern regarding the High Five Fridays. Mr. Powers, is there anything that you would like to add?
No, Madam Chair, that basically summarizes the correspondence that I have received as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Powers, and that concludes Correspondence and Recognition. Next on our agenda, we have the Consent Agenda.
Madam Chair, if I may, there is an item you've missed on the agenda.
Oh.
I'll rise to the podium.
Oh. I did that on purpose.
Yeah, but Mr. Marrera wants to be celebrated.
Okay. Oh, it's nice and big.
I had to. Nice. So, Madam Chair, I rise from the podium because, as you are well aware, and all smiles, you and Kevin, after six years of dedicated service to the school committee, this is your last meeting. I am drawing this out a little bit because we do have a guest arriving as well shortly, I hope. But your leadership over the past year, the both of you, as chair and vice chair, has sort of set us on a course for continued success as a school committee. It has not been easy. We know that. The eight of us know that all too well. And we have, I believe, risen to the challenge that we face on really a daily basis, and that's thanks to the both of you. So, on behalf of the entire committee, we'd like to present you with a little token of appreciation and ask you to come up here. I'm gonna embarrass you. Mr. Dolan, make sure I get this to my place. Mr. Lill, here are the last six years.
Don't tell where they came from.
As many of the folks here know, Mrs. Holbrook spent 35 years teaching in the district and then decided that staying home after retirement was not enough, and decided to spend six more years volunteering as a member of the school committee. So, we thank her for that. And Mr. Marrera, as a dad, veteran of the United States Armed Services, and our go-to for safety and security items, as well as middle school sports.
And safety and security right up until the end.
Right up until the end.
As I would yell at students speeding across the road.
Yep. Yep. We thank you for your service, not just to the school committee, but to our nation as well. Again, you gave six more years of dedicated service on behalf of the Bridgewater Rainham community. We thank you for that.
Thank you.
And with that, I will see if our guest. Sorry, I promise.
Well, Mr. Dolan, can I speak?
Madam Chair.
Yes, you may speak. Mr. Fitzgibbons.
I'm really good at dancing and singing when I'm trying to, you know, put some space in for a special guest. No, but honestly, I mean, I've known Lill since she lived down the street from my parents a couple of years ago.
A couple, just a few.
And we've had the same circle of friends that we know, and you know who they are, Lill, and we value them much as we value you. And to think that you'd spend your entire career as a teacher in the district and then move over to become a school committee person just shows the type of person you are, that it has always been about the kids for you. And I appreciate that so much, not only your dedication for the six years of a school committee person, but more importantly, your many, many years as a teacher. And Kevin, I mean, what can I say? Dude's an Army guy. I mean, he's a soccer coach, and, I mean, you were commander of the VFW in Bridgewater for a while here, right? I mean, you know, talk about a guy who's involved in both communities and doing a great job. Thank you so much for all you've done throughout that service to the children of the district because we can never forget that what we're really here for is the children of the district to really make sure that we set them on a path to success. And, you know, your dedication, both of you, over the last six years, but never mind that, over the course of your lifetime, has been about making sure that our children are set up for success in the future. So, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, when the guest arrives, we'll turn the floor over. That's amenable to Madam Chair.
That is. Thank you, Mr. Dolan. Okay, so next on our agenda, we have the Consent Agenda, approval of minutes dated March 8th, 2023, and March 29th, 2023, the approval of the general ledger warrants dated April 6th, 2023, acceptance of gifts and grants, a three gigabyte internet connection from Bridgewater State University to Bridgewater Rainham Regional School District. So, a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Fitzgibbons, second by Mr. Marrera. In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Madam Chair, pardon me.
You may, Mr. Dolan.
I'd like to introduce our state senator, the Honorable Walter Timmeltie, the senator for the Plymouth District, to the podium.
That is more than acceptable.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you. Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair, and to Mr. Dolan, thank you, and I greatly appreciate the hard work of each and every one of the members of this committee. Thanks for what you do for what is our most precious resource in our communities, our children. So, thank you for this opportunity. Today, obviously, is a very auspicious occasion. I know it's the final meeting for our Chair Holbrook and Mr. Marrera, so congratulations. I thank you for your service, six years of putting everything in your personal life just about on the back burner for the children of the Bridgewater Rainham School District. So, to Lill and to Mr. Marrera, congratulations and thank you for your service. Mr. Marrera, Michael Dolan, is it for me that you are a veteran?
Yeah.
And for that, I thank you very much for what you've done for us and continue to do for us in the great communities of Bridgewater and Rainham. And Lill, where do I start? You know, as the founding, driving force behind the Foundation for Education and obviously giving of yourself, as Mr. Marrera has, for six years in such a wonderful fashion for the children of Bridgewater and Rainham School District, I just want to say thank you. With your permission, I would like to read citations from the Massachusetts State Senate that I authored this week on the State Senate that are recorded in the history of the State Senate, Mr. Marrera and Chair Holbrook, forever for your great service. So, if it's okay with the Chair, I will read the proclamations.
Okay.
Thank you very much. And we'll start off first with Mr. Marrera. Commonwealth Massachusetts State Senate official citation, being noted the Massachusetts State Senate, hereby extends congratulations to Kevin Marrera in recognition of your outstanding and dedicated six years of service on the Bridgewater Rainham School Committee, notably during your tenure as the vice chair, and of course, your service as a veteran can never be mentioned too many times. So, thank you very much, Mr. Marrera. And being further noted the Massachusetts State Senate extends its best wishes for continued success because from what I understand, you're not a retired yet, and that this citation was duly signed by the President of the State Senate and attested to in a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate. It has been signed by our Senate President, Karen East Wilka, attested to by our Clerk, Michael Hurley, in the State Senate, and authored by one very proud State Senator, Walter F. Timmeltie. And with that, I also am well aware of the fact that you've been the point person for the school committee on security issues.
Yes.
And thank you for bringing your expertise and your game serving in our country and our armed forces to be after the wellbeing of our children here in town and obviously in Rainham and Bridgewater collectively. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
And I must say that Representative Demilia passes along his congratulations as well. So, thank you very much. And Chair Holbrook, it's been my privilege to get to know you. I've been friends with your husband for several years, and of course, I've gotten to know your family, and it's been an absolute delight, and it's been a privilege to watch what you were with the Bridgewater Rainham Foundation for Education in conjunction with Mr. Dolan and the wonderful committee. We thank you for your leadership, and I am always happy to take direction from you, Lill. And you are a wonderful leader for all of us, and thank you very much. And this citation reads as follows, Lill. Commonwealth Massachusetts State Senate official citation, being noted the Massachusetts State Senate, hereby extends its congratulations to Lillian Holbrook in recognition of your outstanding and dedicated six years of service to the Bridgewater Rainham School Committee, notably during your tenure as chair, and of course, as the driving force behind the Bridgewater Rainham Foundation for Education. And being further noted the Massachusetts State Senate, Lill extends its very best wishes for continued success because I know you're not going to stop moving. You are a force for good and always have been. That this citation be duly signed by the President of the State Senate and a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk, Lill. It's been signed by our Senate President, Karen East Wilka, attested to by our Clerk, Michael Hurley, and authored by myself, one very proud State Senator of both of you. And again, with the congratulations of Representative Demilia. I thank you both for what you've done, and also thank your families. Public service is a shared sacrifice, and serving on a school committee, any school committee is a full-time job. And I know this school committee certainly puts in great effort across the board, working with our faculty, our administration, and our students. So, teach it every one of you. Thank you. You're a wonderful representative of this school committee and the time work. So, Lill and Mr. Marrera, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. King.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, we have our co-chair, Emerson Kilbski, which will be first with her report. I would like to turn it over to you.
Good evening, everyone. Before I begin, I just want to say thank you to Mrs. Holbrook and Mr. Marrera for your service on the committee, and it's been a pleasure presenting to you these past two years, and I wish you well. This week is very exciting for VR as we are celebrating Spirit Week. Every day, students will be dressing up as one of the themes sponsored by some of our clubs from VR. On Monday, the Gender and Sexuality Alliance Club sponsored Rainbow Day. On Tuesday, the Future Educators Club came up with the theme of Dress as Your Favorite Teacher and Superhero Day, where students will have to dress as a teacher, as a superhero, or as a student or. Today, Wednesday, the Culture Club put on Red Beer Flag Day, where students will have to dress in a way that celebrates their heritage, culture, and roots. Thursday, which is also the day of the pep rally, is a red instead day, which is sponsored by Best Buddies, and students get to dress up in all of their red, with all of their red gear for autumn acceptance. Also on Thursday, will be the senior versus juniors powder puff game, with the seniors hoping to claim their second consecutive win against the juniors. And finally, the VR staff will be sponsoring Vacation Day this Friday, where everyone gets to dress up in their vacation gear to celebrate before we all go on people break. Thank you so much, and this next up is Nolan.
As Emerson mentioned, during our Spirit Week, we'll be having our Spring Spectacular, which will be a pep rally that's happening tomorrow, April 13th, at the end of the school day. The pep rally will take place in the gym, and it's going to focus on both our school sports as well as our clubs. There's going to be a ton of games and activities involving school and graces, volleyball tournament, and even a dance competition, where classes will compete against each other to see who's the ultimate winner. Our students are very excited, and it's going to be a great way to end our last week leading into April Vacation. Thank you. I'd like to welcome real positive.
Before I begin as well, thank you, Ms. Holbrook, as well as thank you, Mr. Marrera, for your dedicated service as well as putting your efforts into this board. I am just so honored to be on this board for the past two years, and, you know, we always come every meeting giving you educational reports, but you definitely touched my heart here. So, thank you so much. As well as for the other members, thank you for your dedicated service. Good evening, everyone. You know, I'm going to keep on doing TJ to the day I die, but here we go. After TJ Square competed the New England District Championships, the team placed 17th in the rankings out of the teams in New England. This accomplishment has led the team to qualify for the World Championships in Houston, Texas, again, second time in a row. And the top 20 teams in New England get chosen. So, this is another big deal for us, and keep us in the moment. We are ready for what's next, and are ready to pack our bags next Tuesday to go to Houston, Texas. If you'd like to see more or visit our website, it's www.tj2.org, or @frcteam88 on all of our socials. I'll be updating it as much as I can. And next up, this is Dani.
On March 23rd, all students from the junior class participated in our annual Credit for Life Fair hosted by a business department head, Mr. Ferrera, for the first time since the pandemic. During this fair, students were given the opportunity to explore their future careers and what it will take for them to truly live the lifestyles that they want to live. We were prompted to choose the job we want in the future or anything similar, and then given a monthly salary, which we had to make spending decisions like transportation, housing, insurance, and even some fun stuff like vacations and going out and concerts. This fair puts a perspective of what it truly costs to live after graduation and prompted good spending choices in our future. Thank you. I'd like to welcome up quick.
Hi, everyone, and good evening to all. Since early January, the Rainwater Players at the high school have been working extremely hard to put on the spring musical for 2023 called Anything Goes. The efforts of the cast and crew of this production have been great, and they are proud to put on this show. The dates to see this show are Thursday, April 27th, Friday, April 28th, and Saturday, April 29th. All of the star times for these shows are at 7:30 PM each night. General seating tickets are $10 each, and preferred seating tickets are $20 each. If you go to bridge-rain.org and click on the poster for the show on the homepage, you will be taken to a link to purchase the tickets for the wonderful production that will take place on the stage of the auditorium of the high school. The Rainwater Players hope to see you there. Thank you for your time. I would love to welcome Rachel up next.
I hope you're all having a great week. Recently, the high school had a special period of the day on April 5th dedicated to different interests and skills called Mini Course Day. Nolan mentioned it at our last meeting briefly, and so I'm just going to go into the details since the day has happened in class. Students went into their assigned room for their course, and from my experience, I went for card magic with Mr. Child, and it was entertaining and absolutely fantastic. Courses varied from golf to cookie decorating and photography. Some of our courses were dedicated to giving students practice and advice with writing college essays, and one of my friends found a super interesting course, which was self-defense, and had a wonderful time, and it was with Mr. Ferrera. Having a course first period to allow us to learn a new and cool and interesting topic was an awesome experience, and I'm grateful that this opportunity was presented to all the students in the high school. I've come out of this mini course day now having a couple card magic tricks that I can do, and my family wants so badly to know how I can do it. Thank you all, and have a wonderful life.
I just want to say thank you to the Student Advisory Council for your report this month. And next month at our May meeting, we'll be saying goodbye to a couple of our seniors that will be moving on next year, so we'll do something special for them. But the rest of the Student Advisory Council, I'm so proud of like how they have come so far with their self-assured and public speaking, so I can't wait till next month when we do something special for them. So, thank you. That is the end of my report.
Thank you, and I can't say thank the Student Advisory Council enough. It's been a pleasure working with you over the years. Your report is my absolute favorite part of the meeting. Just listening to your excitement about what is going on at the high school, it really just warms your heart. So, thank you for all you do and for really the excitement that you bring to VR. Truly appreciate it. Okay, next on our agenda is the pre-K handbooks. Mrs. Maderos.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Acting Superintendent Powers, and members of the school committee. I'm here to present the updated preschool handbook. I just want to extend a special thank you for not only having me here, but before I present the updated changes, I just really want to acknowledge two very hardworking preschool staff members who assisted in the updating of the handbook, and those two teachers are Mrs. Lisa Rugliera and Mrs. Kathy Russo, who is our lead preschool teacher. We're very fortunate to have such talented and wonderful educators in our preschool, which includes every single one of them. They are absolutely fantastic with our little ones, and if ever you get a chance to visit the preschool, please do so. It always brings me joy. I know you were provided with the draft updated handbook to look over. I would just review some of the key differences from the last approved handbook. So, obviously, the cover and the date of the handbook now is updated. The welcome letter from Principal Bray and Assistant Principal Zachary was also updated. Previously, the letter was, but now that we're fully all one school, it is from Mr. Bray and Mrs. Zachary. We have some changes in staff members since the last handbook update, so therefore, their names and contacts have also been updated. In addition, throughout the handbook, updates are referenced for the preschool location from the Rainham Middle School to the new Mitchell Elementary School, including address and telephone numbers. While I'm at it, a big, huge thank you to Charlene Charette and Mr. McKnight for being such wonderful hosts for us for seven years, and all of the Rainham staff as well. Our preschool curriculum has changed from the last handbook, and it has changed recently this year, from the Big Day for Pre-K to Pre-K on My Way. And do I get confused with it? Occasionally, I do. Preschool staff were happy with the Big Day for Pre-K curriculum, but that was being discontinued through the publishing company. And after some research with staff input the past 18 months, Scholastic Pre-K on My Way was adopted. It does have similar themes and core competencies which align with the state's recommended core curriculum for preschool. One of the biggest changes in this proposed handbook is the actual schedule for programming. Previously, we had, for the longest time that I can remember, we had two, three, and four-day placements for typically developing peers who pay tuition to attend. We have streamlined this to be a two, three, and five-day placement option. In the past, we provided some flexibility to families for specific days, but we are now firming up the program to be two days, specifically Tuesdays and Thursdays only, and three-day programs for Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays only. The five-day program will meet the needs and requests of many families who have their child and will have their child attend all five days. Previous flexibility was available because the four-day program made for what I refer to as a dangling day, which drove me crazy, but we wanted to fill enrollment so that would make floating days, and that's why the schedule was flexible. The elimination of the four-day program is perfect because it allows for more consistency for streamlining programming instruction and events. The tuition rates have remained the same for the two-day program. It remains $650 paid biannually. The three-day program is also the same at $975 paid biannually. The five-day program needed a rate, and it was simple enough. The two-day plus the three-day equals $1,625, so that is the rate for the five-day paid again biannually. There is a proposed slight change in when payments are due. Previously, it was August for the start of the school year. It has been moved up to July 15th. This allows for confirmation of our preschool enrollment to be early enough for planning purposes, and therefore, we'll know who's confirmed. The January date has also been changed. The January date has also been changed from January first to January fifteenth. And that is because I am repeatedly reminded that January first is right after the holidays. So we are switching it to January fifteenth as I do get requests to extend it just for a week or two. The preschool times will remain the same for the coming school year. Administration, though, would like the preschool times to eventually line up with the George Mitchell Elementary School Day in the near future, if possible. This concludes my summary of the key changes to the proposed updated preschool handbook. I do ask for your approval so that we may move forward with the proposed changes, and I also welcome any questions or concerns.
So we have a motion to approve the pre-K handbook as well as the 2023 preschool student contract and schedule as presented. Have a motion by Mr. Marrera, second by Mr. Dolan. Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes, Mrs. Hamlin. Ms. Maderos, was the handbook at all reviewed by the parent council? Is there a preschool parent council?
There currently isn't a preschool council. When we were at the George Mitchell, when we were at Rainham Middle School, and I was leading the preschool then, I did work to have a subcommittee as part of the Rainham Parents Group. So we did formulate, and we had some wonderful parents who helped us out just so we could have some fun activities for our little ones. But preschool would be considered part of JemSpa as it's part of the George Mitchell Elementary School.
Will this be on the review when they go through there? Because aren't parent councils supposed to review handbooks?
They can. Really, the only handbook that needs to really be reviewed and approved individually is the high school. We obviously, as, you know, a district, most districts do obviously review their elementary and middle school handbooks, depending if they're by school or by grade level. Obviously, ours have transitioned more to grade level, so it would be something that they could certainly take a look at.
Have any questions, comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Marrera, second by Mr. Dolan, all in favor.
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. Thank you for bringing this forward with all the changes, Mrs. Maderos, and we look forward to looking at that program.
Thank you so much. And again, special thank you to you all for all you do and my neighbor down the street, Mr. Marrera.
Next on our agenda, we have Bridging Lives Peer Leaders Grade Five Mentorship Program. Ms. Laura O'Brien.
Good evening, Madam Chairperson, Acting Superintendent, Mr. Powers, and members of the School Committee. I would like to thank you very much for allowing us to share three of our amazing peer leaders with you. We would be here all night if I went through all of the wonderful things that we have accomplished, but this is the first year of what we believe to be an ongoing and amazing program. And I am going to leave it to Shannon, Kayla, and Maggie to go through with you a little mini-presentation that they were actually asked to present at our national conference, at our, excuse me, at our regional conference, the Be in the Know Youth Conference. They did this in front of two hundred people and were far and away the best presenters of the day. And you'll see why. So I'm going to turn it over to Kayla, Maggie, and Shannon.
So good evening. We are so excited to be here today. Mrs. O'Brien is our amazing advisor. So the Bridging Lives Peer Leaders are a youth subcommittee with the Bridging Lives Coalition. We work with students to address substance use prevention within the schools and work to empower youth to use their voices in an issue that matters to them. We have done work all throughout the community, ranging from parents of schoolchildren, teenagers in high school, all the way to middle schoolers as young in fifth grade, where we did most of these modules that you will see just as a summary for tonight as we were able to spend an hour with them each time we go, and we will be having one more module this year. So we are going to introduce ourselves, but in interactive ways if we were to with them. Each of us are going to say our name with an adjective and then our grade in sharing how we are involved with Bridging Lives. So I'm just going to start. My name is Shannon. I usually use silly as an adjective. I am the president of Bridging Lives, as well as I serve on the state as well. And I just love being with them and using my voice to address matters that I love and am passionate about and how to change. So I pass to Kayla.
My name is Kayla. I'm a sophomore and I'm a Bridging Lives peer leader. And the adjective that I like to use for the fifth graders is con.
Hi, and I know Shannon already said that, but we're really excited to be here. Thank you for having us. My name is Maggie. So when we go to the fifth grader, if you'd like to make it fun for them by putting that adjective, so I'm going to say magical Maggie to make it a little fun. But I'm a junior here at the high school, and I'm on the executive board of Bridging Lives. And I absolutely love it and being able to make a positive change in the world is really great.
So just to give you an overview of what this program was, Bridging Lives began an initiative this year where we worked with the fifth graders of our fifth graders, my apologies, fifth graders of our district to educate them about mental health and substance use. We have met and presented to these fifth graders three times already and plan to meet with them one more time before this year is over. Every module we present is created by licensed mental health professionals from the Rockton Area Prevention Collaborative and High Point Treatment Center. We decided to start with the age of fifth grade for this project after the results of an alarming survey. Last year, grades six through twelve at our district were surveyed on their use of a variety of different substances. We were shocked to see that the first reported use was in the sixth grade, the earliest the test was administered. We believe that by starting education as early as a fifth grade, we can limit this increasing problem before it becomes widespread, as shown in the older grades. Our first module was all about brain and emotions. We talked all about the brain and its development, emotions, and how to identify them, and used games to help keep the kids engaged and interested in the topics. Next, we are going to show you some examples of the slides we used. These are just a select few from the full presentation in which we go into much more detail about the topics. So the brain is the first one, and we taught them about their brain, how the brains aren't fully developed until they're twenty-five, but at the age of eleven, which is most of their ages, the brain changes and begins to think more complexly. It begins to feel emotions more deeply and can solve more difficult problems. Everything that we do, all the choices that we make, will have some sort of effect, so we want to make sure it is a positive one. The next slide that we did is emotions. We taught them all about the different kinds of emotions that someone can feel and how it's okay to feel everything from happy to stressed, angry or sad. We emphasized on the different situations that can make someone feel certain ways and what their reactions to those emotions normally are. The most important thing, however, is how we choose to react to those emotions. So the next slide is Uno, which is a game that we played. In order to keep the fifth graders excited and engaged in sharing, we played a version of Uno called Zones and Regulations. In this game, the normal rules of Uno stay the same, but every time a child discarded a card, they would have to share a time they felt a certain emotion. These emotions were based on colors, so if someone played a red card, they would have to share a certain time they felt angry. A yellow card was a time they felt anxious or stressed. A green card was a time they felt joy, and a blue card was a time they felt sad. The second module that we did went more into depth on mental health and coping. We were shifting away from brain because we wanted to educate them on how important mental health is and different coping skills you can use in response to mental health issues. We made sure, just like the first one, to keep it very interactive, practicing many different things with them in the room. Our, just like before, we're going to share just a few slides from the presentations. These are just a couple few that we picked up. In reality, we're with the fifth graders for an hour, taking up one of their blocks of the day to do this. We talk them about what mental health is. It's how we feel in our mind, how our brain is functioning, and the emotions we feel. We spoke about how good mental health is not necessarily the lack of negative emotions, but rather the ability to respond and cope with them well, making the most of our potential and having a fulfilling kind of life. We also explained the difference between mental and physical health and that keeping your mental health good is just as important as keeping good physical health. We then talked about how important coping skills were to our mental health and how there are positive reactions to that. We described many different types of coping skills, such as driving, breathing deeply, talking to someone, crying, journaling, singing, walking, many others. You see, we got a full list. That's right up there. We also did a whole bunch of breathing exercises along with them, including stuff that caught them up and out of their seats to interact with. This is an example of one of the exercises we have them trace through, breathing in and breathing out. So our third module was our most recent module that we talked to the fifth graders about confidence, self-esteem, and resilience. We discussed why these things are important and how to build them up. As in the other modules, we finished with an engaging activity where they got to practicing I am statements and showing gratitude. We explained that self-confidence is your attitude about your skills and abilities, and it is the ability to accept and trust yourself. It's being in control of your life and knowing your own strengths and weaknesses. Overall, having good self-confidence means you have a positive view of yourself. We then brought up resilience, a term most had not heard before we had told them what it was, and how important it is to have the ability to bounce back when things get hard. What people in our lives do, as well as the way we talk to ourselves, affects the way we feel. We want to make sure we keep those effects positively and happy. If something has bothered you or something unwanted happens, try to keep your thoughts positive, look after yourself, and never give up. We then practiced I am statements or positive affirmations, which can help us think more positively about ourselves, build confidence, and tackle challenges. To practice these, we got the fifth graders up and moving using a beach ball. On each part of the beach ball, there is something written. Some are I am statements, whereas others are questions that make you think about gratitude. We passed the ball around to each other, and whichever section your right hand is on, you had to use, you had to share. So that is the end of our presentation, and we would love to thank you all for having us and sharing exactly, allowing us to share with you what we have done with our fifth graders this year as we have built many, many strong connections with them. We have several fifth graders come up to us, give us hugs every time we see them, and we just know how much they're loving it and allowing us to come in and share this with you as we do with them. So thank you.
Okay, I would like to thank Kayla, Maggie, Shannon, and Ms. O'Brien for all that you do to educate our fifth-grade students about mental health and substance abuse. Your work is just so very important, and I just love your, the way you present it to the fifth-grader, fifth graders and keep them very engaged in it. Your personalities come shining through, and I totally understand why those fifth graders absolutely love you. So thank you very much.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I just make a comment?
Sure.
I went to their program. They gave me a presentation at RMS. I'm also a fifth-grade parent. I was so impressed by your presentation at RMS and tonight. I have a fifth grader, and she has come home and tell me about the program. So you're definitely making an impact. She was engaged. She told me about it. We all know middle school kids do not tell you anything. So you're definitely making an impact, so thank you so much for the program. It's a great idea, and she is definitely loving it. So I know many fifth graders are as well.
Yes, Mr. Powers.
Just again, I wanted to echo everything that's been said, certainly share what Ms. King has said. I had the chance to go over to Williams and see some of their presentation. I also just wanted to take a minute to acknowledge Ms. O'Brien and the work that she's done with Ms. Horn and Mr. Warnock. Talk about, you know, putting in a full career and not being able to stay away. Ms. Horn, Mr. Warnock, were gracious enough to come back this year. Obviously, as you know, we were awarded a grant through the CDC to really expand our programming district-wide, and much of what Bridging Lives is doing is benefiting from that extra, extra funding through the grant. But, you know, just hats off to them. Also, I want to acknowledge our partners from High Point. Obviously, they provide a lot of guidance and support, but it really does come down to our students. And if you've ever seen the commercial that's out there about Bridging Lives, that's really the focus. It's an organization for the students, by the students. And I just, again, want to, I know there's only a small representation here of our students, but they're such a large group, but they really do an amazing job. And it's great to hear that they're having such a good impact, not just on our fifth graders, but district-wide and even in the community. But Bridging Lives is not just school. It goes across the community. So they do different campaigns throughout the year. And again, just, you know, talk about a group that makes the district proud. Bridging Lives is definitely one of those groups. So thank you to everybody.
Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Marrera.
I just wanted to say the presentation tonight was amazing. As somebody who served in the military with adults, I see the other end of the spectrum as being a combat veteran. And all the combat veterans that I see nowadays are struggling with stuff that if they had had educational programs like this when they were younger, it may have been a better transition for them in lives. So I think starting this at a younger age is amazing, and it'll only help them and make them stronger adults as they get older. So thank you.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion to approve the Bridging Lives to conduct a survey to grades six through twelve, as well as the Excel program as required by the Drug-Free Community Grant.
Some men share a second, but I believe there's a presentation.
Oh, there's a presentation for that. Okay, go for it.
Not nearly as fun as the kids, but we'll do our best. Sure you will. So again, thank you so much for having us. We just did, like I said, a little snippet of what these guys did at the, at the conference in front of, again, two hundred people. They were amazing. And as Mr. Powers said, you know, if you have an opportunity, we still have one module left at RMS and one at the Williams. And having built this connection, we feel that the last, you know, the culminating module will be around specifically around substances because these kids love and trust the high school kids now. It's like, you know, when they walk in, they're like rock stars. So that brings us to the next point, and that is, you know, one of the things, or the main thing, I guess, that's going, that is allowing us now and will allow us to continue this amazing work, is the Drug-Free Communities Grant. So in October of 2022, we were awarded the grant, and our specific focus is marijuana and prescription drugs. One requirement of the grant is to survey students annually over the next five years. And the Coalition is requesting approval to survey students this spring utilizing the survey tool that's been used by the High Point Treatment Center the past three years. And I'm going to introduce Mr. Warnock and Ms. Horn, and they'll just go over some of the main points for you, but I believe you have a hard copy of the survey, and then we can entertain any questions that you may have. So thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Basically, the survey asks the following questions. First question deals with past thirty-day use, and it begins during the past thirty days, how many times did you, and things, their choices are the ones that this also referred to, drinking, smoking cigarettes, marijuana, and prescription drugs. The second question deals with conception of risk and harm. The question begins, how much do you think young people risk harming themselves physically or in other ways if they use these things? The third question deals with parental disapproval, and the question begins, how wrong do your parents feel it would be for you to? parents feel it would be for you to use these things? And the fourth question deals with peer disapproval, and the question begins, how wrong do your friends feel it would be for you to use these things? The survey only takes about five or 10 minutes, not a heck of a lot of time, but a lot of information we gather from that survey. Now, Mrs. Horn.
Good evening. So we're asking, I'm requesting permission to survey the middle and high school students in grades six through 12, in addition to our Excel students at night. The surveys will be conducted virtually. I believe we're going to survey students during the day in their advisory here at the high school. The survey will then be analyzed by Kelly Research Associates. The survey is 100% anonymous, and parents complete a passive consent form, meaning that they will only send in an opt-out letter back to the school if they do not want their child to participate in the survey. And we would be happy to answer any questions.
Hang on, from the committee, have any questions, comments? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes, thank you. And obviously, this is a great program, and the students have done a great job connecting with fifth graders, which leads to my question. Why wouldn't we extend the survey down to the fifth grade so we have a baseline of, now we've gotten this program underway with the fifth grade, and do we see next year, when they go into sixth grade, and I'm assuming we're going to do a similar survey, that in fact, okay, the sixth graders who weren't exposed to this program had much different or significantly different views than the sixth graders who were impacted by this program as fifth graders?
That's a good question, and I am brand new to Bridging Lives this year, so how they came up with the six through 12 model would probably be better answered by Ms. O'Brien.
So our thoughts were that we have conducted this survey before, and it just in, you know, informal focus groups and things like that. It came to our attention that, you know, originally, programs like this were started in seventh and eighth grade, but, you know, Mr. Powers, in his role as Assistant Superintendent, was one of our biggest cheerleaders and supporters, was at, and, you know, and we all kind of came to the conclusion that we needed to start sooner than seventh grade. And to address your point, our hope is that giving this survey every year, so we would have data from this year's sixth grade, and then hopefully next year, so our current fifth graders, having gone through the program, will take the survey as sixth graders next year, and our hope is that we see the needle move a little bit.
And I'm just wondering, because you could see the needle move in both ways, couldn't you? Because if you took the survey now, after being exposed to this great peer leaders mentorship program, that everyone is no, 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 and then if it gets to sixth grade, and it's not as bad as this sixth grade is, but it's fallen off, maybe you can improve the peer leadership program. I'm just, I'm not, I'm not advocating for anything. I think it's great, but I think it's just a way that we could extend the measurement and be able to say, okay, you know, these things worked, and it actually worked a bit. We're doing better with sixth graders, but we still lost some, and how did, how did that, you know, whatever. I, I just, if I could amend it to say, because you guys, you guys made the right decision, I'm sure, is just amend it to say, fifth grade, if need, if, if deemed appropriate or something like that, that, you know, we can do it.
I mean, I certainly think that that's a possibility. I mean, the principals that are involved in, you know, helping us with this have the fifth grade in their building, so, I mean, we're already going to be working with.
Not at the Williams.
I'm sorry?
Not at the Williams.
Uh, fifth grade?
Fifth grade's at the Williams.
Is that the Williams?
Yeah.
So, oh, in sixth grade? Isn't sixth grade also with the Williams?
No.
Okay.
It's at the Williams.
Sixth is, okay. But we, you know, we've been working with that all year, so I don't think that that would be a problem.
And I'll leave it up to you and Mr. Powers and everybody to figure it out. I, it was just a thought I had, because I think it would be great to be able to show the value of this program that we just heard about, which sounds so good. You know what I mean?
With the same cohort of students. I know, I completely appreciate your comments, and that's something I could certainly discuss with Mr. Powers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much for having us, and I will be reaching out to find, we have, Ms. Horn is modeling our wonderful shirt, so we would like to, you know, thank you for your attention, and we'll get everybody a shirt. I just will kind of find a way to get sizes. And I might be recruiting some of you to join the Bridging Lives Coalition. After just having returned from our first week of formal training in North Carolina, we realized that building capacity, building capacity, excuse me, is the key to sustainability, so I might be reaching out. It's a once-a-month commitment of a meeting that can be either virtual or in person. So just have your excuses ready. Thank you again very much. Thank you.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve the Bridging Lives to conduct a survey in grades six through 12, as well as the Excel program as required by the Drug-Free Community Grant.
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Marrera, second by Mr. Dolan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next on our agenda, we have administrative and school committee reports. Mr. Powers, do you have anything?
Actually, no, Madam Chair, there was the potential of talking about the organizational chart, but that, we'll save that for a later date.
Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda, we have our policy subcommittee, Mrs. King.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The policy sub, this is my policy subcommittee meeting report of April 4th, 2023, and April 11th, 2023. On Tuesday, April 4th, 2023, the policy subcommittee met, in attendance were Ms. Conrad Laberinto, Mr. Fitzgibbons, Acting Superintendent Mr. Powers, Acting Assistant Superintendent Ms. Barry, Nurse Leader Claire Brennan, Ms. Natalie Sadorovitz as our recording secretary, and myself. The policy subcommittee reviewed the following policies, which were near Google Drive with any supporting documentation. Policy GDA, Support Staff Positions. Policy GDB, Support Staff Contracts and Compensation. And Policy GDJ, Placement Assignment and Transfer. These policies will continue via a motion to continue to our next meeting, our April 11th meeting, for their review. As after discussion, these policies were considered repetitive and vague as to the description of support staff. So we wanted to look through the policy manual, as the policy manual was down for a few weeks with some problems with MASC, so once it was up, we wanted to review those. Did anyone have any questions about that? Next was Policy GCO, Evaluation of Professional Staff. This policy was reviewed and revised to align with the current evaluation process outlined by DESI and the current collective bargaining agreement. Ms. Barry provided feedback regarding this update. The main provisions on the current staffs evaluation outlined by DESI and the process, and that the process is now electronic. This will be a first read due to the extent of revisions. Accordingly, Madam Chair, if everyone has read and reviewed this policy, I would like to make a motion to waive the full reading of Policy GCO, Evaluation of Professional Staff.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. King, we have a second by Mr. Fitzgibbon. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. The second reading will be at our May school committee meeting. So if anyone has any questions or comments on that one, let me know prior to that meeting. The next was Policy GCGD, Coach Appointments. This policy was revised and updated by the policy subcommittee in May of 2022 and approved at the full school committee meeting on May 25th, 2022. I know one of our school committee members had asked about it. This updated policy was not updated by MASC as of the date that I looked at it, so that does need to be sent to MASC to make sure they have our updated policy. However, we did also have one housekeeping edit regarding the policy, following ratification of the most recent BREA contract, the 2021 through 2024 contract. Article 11, Vacancies and Transfers, Section A1F. We revised the posting date to annually, not later than June 10th. So the June 10th date was changed, and the policy was prior to that June 1st. So that is the only addition to that revised policy from May of 2022. Accordingly, since that is a housekeeping edit, Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve revisions to Policy GCGD, Coach Appointments.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. King, second by Mr. Fitzgibbon. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
All right, next is Policy GCRD, Tutoring Regulations. This policy upon review had a minor housekeeping edit. To clarify, it was a little bit vague. To clarify, teachers shall not be permitted to tutor for a student for a fee who is, we added the word currently assigned to his or her classroom, just to make that more clear, that a staff can barely not tutor a current, that is in their current classroom, as well as clarifying regarding home tutoring for illnesses, that the just Director of Student Services would arrange that tutoring and not the superintendent's office. Accordingly, Madam Chair, with those housekeeping edits, I would like to make a motion to approve Policy GCRD, Tutoring Regulations.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. King, second by Mr. Fitzgibbon. Any discussion? Seeing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The last policy that we reviewed at the April 4th meeting was the Policy ADF, Wellness Policy. This was a federal mandate that was sent to the district. The last time this policy was revised was in 2017. The district received a federal mandate update to our Policy ADF Wellness Policy. Based upon our Wellsat questionnaire, we were required to fully revamp the entire wellness policy. Accordingly, Assistant Superintendent Barry and Nurse Leader Brennan worked with district admin, as well as a DESI advisor that was assigned to us to update all areas of the wellness policy with regard to nutrition, meals, wellness, physical education, and activity. In your drive, I provided the original policy, as well as the revised policy that that team worked on. She, Ms. Barry, also provided the Wellsat questionnaire, which we answered at the beginning of the process, and then at the end of the process, to make sure that we had revised it sufficiently to have DESI approve it. Since this is a federal mandate, it does not require a first and second read, it is only one read. We will vote to approve hopefully this policy tonight. What's the motion of the floor? Ms. Barry is here, if anyone has specific questions regarding it as well, regarding her revisions of that. Since it is a total revamp and required extensive time to implement throughout the district at all of our schools, we will not be implementing the new policy until the next school year, our fall of 2023, to give everyone time to review and implement at every building. However, please note, it is required to be implemented as and approved as a district since it's a federal mandate, otherwise we could be at risk to lose access to the school lunch program funding. So I will enter, I will like to make a motion to waive the full reading of Policy ADF Wellness Policy, since it is quite lengthy.
Second.
Hopefully everyone will read it.
And we have a motion by Mrs. King, second by Mr. Fitzgibbon. Any discussion? Comments?
Well, this is just on the.
Just to face the.
Wait, the wait.
Um, sorry, yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Accordingly, Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve Policy ADF, Wellness Policy as revised.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr., Mrs. King, second by Mr. Fitzgibbon. Any discussion? Mr. Fitzgibbon?
Yeah, I'd just like to say the, the folks who went in and revised this according to all the federal, new federal guidelines, new state guidelines, et cetera, et cetera, did a, did yeoman's work on it, and, and, you know, were able to say we're in compliance with everything. You know, a lot of times, folks think, oh, you're doing this policy, why are you doing that policy? Well, as Mrs. King just said, we'd rather not lose funding for the federal lunch program, right? You got to follow, you got to follow the rules as they roll down the hill from the feds to the state to us. So, and, and, you know, it sounded like DESI was a real partner with us, working to get this, this policy written in the appropriate way so it would pass muster, so I'm fully in support of it.
Thank you. And I do want to thank the team that, Mrs. Brennan, Ms. Barry, and their whole admin team that worked on it. They have been working on it since summer of 2022, so many months of going back and forth, trying to get that approved, and up to what DESI would prove, so. We used to have a two-page policy, now it's like 16 pages, so. There's quite a lot in there, so it's very specific. Does anyone else have questions?
I just have a comment, Madam Chair. I just think, as we talked about last night with Ms. Barry, the policy subcommittee, there will need to be education to our staff, our school bidding administrators, to our parents about what this policy means, and again, is a federal mandate, we don't have a lot of choices behind it, but it will take some time to allow folks to kind of understand what is in this policy.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. King, second by Mr. Fitzgibbon. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. And just like Mrs. Conrad Laberinto said, we did talk to Ms. Barry about it at our, yesterday, our last meeting. So there is the expectation that they are going to push that out to all of the schools and do education with them, but it's also going to go on the district website, so parents can know, you know, what sort of impact they have. So it includes nutrition, wellness, physical activity, all different things, so it definitely is going to be posted so parents can know in advance what the new changes are.
And I just suggest, and I apologize if I could make it last night, but we have an executive summary for the TLDR people, because 16 pages is a long, long thing to slog through and, you know.
Like the main point.
Yeah, just here, here's what you need to take away from it as parents, so. I guess that's directed toward the Acting Superintendent.
Thank you. Also, on Tuesday, April 11th, 2023, the policy subcommittee met, in attendance were Mrs. Conrad Laberinto, Mrs. Mortelli, Acting Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Ms. Barry, Ms. Natalie Sadorovitz as our recording secretary, and myself. The policy subcommittee reviewed the following policies. Policy GCO, Evaluation of Professional Staff. Policy GDA, Support Staff Positions. And Policy GD, GDB, Support Staff Contracts and Compensation. We reviewed these policies again and had a lengthy discussion, and all, again, were continued via a motion to continue to our next meeting, potentially in May. It was agreed by the policy sub that these three should be combined to one updated policy regarding our proctor or non-union and non-contractual employees, to clarify the intent of the policy. As professional staff, it's not something that we have within district, it was too vague. Normally, we try to err on more vague to not be too constrictive, but that was so vague, we weren't even sure who it was directed to. So we will revise those to one policy and try and work on those again. Next was Policy EB, Safety Program. This policy was reviewed and revised to update the communications of safety concerns to the appropriate school personnel and the school community. As this was a substantive addition to the policy, this will be a first read. Accordingly, Madam Chair, since everyone has had a copy of the policy to read and review, I would like to make a motion to waive the full reading of Policy EB, Safety Program.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Mrs. King, second by Mr. Fitzgibbon. Any discussion?
Just a quick one, because safety is obviously one of the top concerns of every parent, everybody in this room, I'm sure. What are the, what's the substantive changes?
The main point that we changed, we left mostly the whole thing alone, but we did add one sentence, and that was, after the third paragraph, the practice of safety will also be considered a facet of the. also be considered a facet of the instructional program of the schools, we added the following, there will also be the shared responsibility of the superintendent, building administrators, and staff to communicate concerns about safety to the appropriate school personnel immediately. Subsequently, such safety concerns will be communicated to the school community in a thorough and timely manner. We just wanted to add in there, since, you know, the state that we live in right now, with, you know, so many things going on, there could be a mining, a minor safety issue, there could be a large safety issue, but any safety issue should be communicated, and that wasn't in the policy. We kind of went back and forth on those timelines, but we felt like immediately really captured, if it's a safety concern, we don't want it to be subjective, we want to know immediately and admin can deal with it.
If you see something, say something.
Yeah, whether it's a small thing or a large thing.
No, then.
We want, we want it to go to the appropriate party immediately to be taken care of. And we also wanted to put in there that parents in our school committee, they should be, you know, they should be told of what's happening, but also we know that admin needs to take care of the immediate threat and concern, and investigate what's going on, and then put out the correct information. So that was, will be added.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mrs. King, second by Mr. Fitzgibbon, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, so that was a first read, so that will go to our May to. And the last policy that we reviewed.
Sorry, Mrs. King, I apologize.
That was a first read?
Yes.
Yes, that was just a motion to waive, and then it wasn't.
First. I just wanted to make sure folks understood what the changes were, that we weren't just running things under the rug.
I'm sorry, hold on.
Madam Chair, we did have another policy that came up under other, policy JEB entrance age, it is on tonight's agenda, so we did discuss it last night, based on an email and a conversation that we had. Policy JEB entrance age, this policy was reviewed specifically the last paragraph mentioning exceptions to the entrance age. The current policy does allow the superintendent to make exceptions for children transferring from other districts with different minimum age requirements, for example, a four-year-old in kindergarten transferring to our district from another district that would allow for a younger minimum age, such as I believe Brockton has that. That is understandable, especially if that student has already been enrolled in school and has been socialized and is used to the routine of school. So that we would move up to the discretion of the superintendent, as is in the policy currently. However, the policy did strike the end of that sentence, stating and also children living in the district with birthdays that have an approximate date to the deadline. The committee felt that it was vague, left too much on the superintendent to interpret, and we're always cognizant of the concerns of class size in our kindergarten classes, as well as any potential budgetary impact it would have. Since then, since we struck that, which was a potential significant change, this would also be a first read, Madam Chair. Accordingly, if all members have read and reviewed the policy and the caveat that I just said, I would like to make a motion to waive the full reading of policy JEB entrance age.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. King, second by Mrs. Martelli, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, so that second reading will also be at our May meeting, and that concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Okay, and thank you to Mrs. King and to members of the policy subcommittee for reviewing all of the policies. Next on the agenda, we have community liaisons, Mr. Fitzgibbon and Mrs. Conrad Lavaranto. Mrs. Conrad Lavaranto? Mr. Fitzgibbon?
Sure, I have a few things tonight from my speaking with folks around the district. One, one of the biggest concerns I've heard, and we're gonna talk about it a little bit later, is the budget, obviously, and what that means. Are we focusing our resources in the right places, et cetera? There was a long conversation with a, with a, with a parent from Bridgewater, and then there was another parent from Rainham, who was very concerned about, you know, the best thing we can do is to reduce class sizes, to make all of our lives better, easier, less stressful, and obviously, that ties in with the budget as well. So, you know, it's, and I, no one's denying, it's a very challenging year this year, but those concerns are certainly out there, especially because it's a challenging year. So there's, there's, there's that. And then, there's been some concern, I would say mostly at the high school level, around students in math, especially having lost out during the pandemic on some very important foundational skills, as far as, you know, early algebra, manipulating equations, et cetera, goes in math particularly, because if you don't have those foundational skills, it's very hard to keep moving on and forward up the, up the curriculum, and, you know, to have, to have students who understand what's being taught, but unfortunately, didn't, weren't exposed to the basic blocks below that, failing tests, even though they showed they understood the question, doing the, as I call it, the arithmetic below it, and how are we going to backfill and solve for that going forward, to still keep recovering from the pandemic? So, that's been expressed by a few people from both towns to me, at the high school level. So those, those are the big concerns I heard, you obviously reported on others during your report, so I won't, I won't repeat those.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgibbon.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbon, just certainly extend the offer, if you were back in contact with any of those parents, I'm certainly happy to speak to them, or connect them with Ms. Watson, or Ms. Joyce, our coordinator of teaching and learning for.
Great, appreciate that, thank you, Ms. Powers.
And I think that goes for any time, any community member does have a type of a concern.
I generally try to do that, so, you know, go up the chain of command, as you will, you know, see, see, talk to the teacher, talk to the guidance council, let's talk to the principal, however, you know, follow the chain of command, but it had come up enough in just talking with people that I wanted to bring up.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next on our agenda, we have the long-range planning, Mrs. Conrad Lavaranto.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to give an update of what, where things are at at this point with the superintendent evaluation. Given that Mr. Powers has been, was appointed the acting superintendent after the goals, the goals were developed, we will not be conducting the superintendent evaluation this year, it is not fair to Mr. Powers, he was not a part of that discussion, so at this point, there will not be a superintendent evaluation.
Thank you, Mrs. Conrad Lavaranto.
Madam Chair, is that a requirement by state law that we have to have on our ear, and do we have to vote to waive it?
I don't, because we don't, I will go back and look, I don't believe that is true, because we don't submit it to anyone.
And I'd suggest.
Come from the state. I believe we do submit it.
We do, we do.
DESI gets a copy of it, we may need to, if I may.
Does the chair submit it? Does the chair submit it?
The district does. So we may need to reach out to DESI to make sure we do every, do our due diligence to.
I'll work with Mr. Powers to work through that and to.
Yeah, if we need to vote, then.
Let's just simple vote, just to exempt the year.
Exactly, but it is given the circumstances. So do we need a vote, or should we wait till next meeting?
I would say wait, and let's.
Well, we'll get clarification and then, and bring it in May if we need a vote.
All right, next on our agenda, we have the diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging workshop report, Mr. Fitzgibbon.
Yes, thank you, and I'd like to thank, I see Ms. Barrios there, for helping coordinate that for the school committee, this was a school committee workshop that, that we were doing, and, and the coordinator was, the trainer was really great, and had us think a lot about our own self, our own identities, and how do we look at ourselves, but also asking us, you know, how do we look at other folks, and how do we get comfortable engaging in uncomfortable conversations about diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging? And I think there was a great, and the folks who were there, correct me if I'm wrong, because I think I did, I think I'm remembering it right, there's a great analogy that the trainer had about, you know, planning a party, and diversity is inviting everybody to the party. Equity is making sure everyone is having a good time at the party. Inclusion is making sure that everyone has a say in how the party is put together, and belonging is really where you want to end up in this space, to be, to be, feel like, you know what, this is my party, I love this party, and I really feel like I belong in this party. And so, you know, and we were challenged as school committee members to, how do we, how do we create a culture, how do we create policies, procedures? We just talked about evaluating superintendent, putting it in superintendent's goals around achieving these, and I'd just like to, I'd just like to read out for everybody our equity statement, because, you know, we don't hear it enough, and, you know, it's important that we, we actually live out this statement to, to help all of our students, all of our community, to end up in that space of belonging. So our equity statement says, the Bridgewater-Rainham Regional School District will remain steadfast in its pursuit of creating and maintaining an environment where all community members, all community members are able to be their full and most authentic selves, and feel a profound sense of belonging, there's that word belonging. The district committed, commits itself to lifelong learning, recognizing the true diversity and equity work is continuous and requires an ongoing commitment of our professional and personal development resources and time. And I think, you know, as we, as we get into the next, the next student success plan, et cetera, that this, this should be one of our guiding statements in understanding where are we going and where do we want to be as a district five years from now, for all of the, all of the stakeholders in our district. That's what I get out of it, I, I, can I open the floor to other members who are here? Because I'm sure they've gotten other learnings from it, but maybe very interesting and helpful to hear.
Sure, is there anyone on the committee that would like to add anything?
Just to echo Madam Chair, if I could, the thanks to Ms. Barrios and LMP for, for developing it and presenting it to us.
All right, next on our agenda, we have the personnel report, Ms. Healy.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school committee members, and Acting Superintendent Powers. Very glad I didn't go after those students, and I had a bit of a break. So thank you for having me, I just want to give our report from March thirtieth through current date, April twelfth. We have had five new hires, one substitute nurse hire, one substitute teacher, one reassignment, three resignations, and one maternity.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Healy?
Thank you very.
Madam Chair, if I could, I just wanted to acknowledge one of those, certainly, you know, anytime we have a staff member come on board, we're so excited to have them, and it's, you know, bittersweet when we have one leave. Mr. Renget, one of the high school assistant principals, you'll notice is on your personnel report, he has been appointed the principal of the Douglas High School, so we want to congratulate him and thank him for all he's done for the district and for the high school. I know it's a, Ms. Watson certainly is dealing with mixed emotions as well, and I know the staff is, but we obviously wish him well and thank him for all his years of service to the district. Obviously, Mr. Renget came up through as a teacher, and then moved into his role as administration, and like many of our assistant principals, you know, he's aspired to move up in the ranks and become a principal, and so he had this opportunity, and he was, you know, thankful he was appointed, so I want to acknowledge him.
Yes, and wish him well. Thank you for your report, Ms. Healy. Next on our agenda, we have payroll warrants, so I will entertain a motion to approve the payroll warrants dated April sixth, two thousand and twenty-three.
So.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. King, second by Mr. Marrera. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, next on our agenda, we have an update to adjust the FY twenty-four budget.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I inadvertently, this is housekeeping for audit purposes, I inadvertently read the wrong numbers, so we need to motion to, or we need to revoke this for obviously audit purposes, as I said. So Madam Chair, a motion to recommend that subject to review and ratification by the district treasurers, the school committee vote to approve the final budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, excluding debt and capital costs in the amount of eighty-eight million, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars. The final budget figure of eighty-eight million, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars, to be reduced by an anticipated revenue totaling thirty-three million, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars, I'm sorry, thirty-three million, eight hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars, and an E and D apportionment of one point six million dollars, leaving the amount of fifty-two million, six hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars, to be paid by the member towns as follows. Rainham's apportionment of said costs is to be the state's requirement minimum contribution of eighteen million, three hundred and thirty-three, sorry, eighteen million, three hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars, plus the nondiscretionary charges of two million, two hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars for a total from Rainham in the amount of twenty million, five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Bridgewater's apportionment of the said costs is to be the state's required minimum contribution of twenty-eight million, six hundred and sixty, six hundred and six, sorry, this, this, motion gets me every time I read this, apparently. Twenty-eight million, six hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars, plus the nondiscretionary charges of three million, four hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars, for a total from Bridgewater in the amount of thirty-two million, seventy-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars. The apportionment and nondiscretionary charges are based on enrollment in the Bridgewater-Rainham Regional School District as of October first, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Dolan, second by Mr. Fitzgibbon.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Sure.
So the numbers, the totals remain the same. What I read wrong was the, the apportionments as the breakdown, so the total numbers to the towns remained the same, it's the other numbers that I misread. So just to be clear, the town of, both towns will get this through certification through the district treasurer in the coming days, but the number we voted remains the same, the total.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I have one question, Mr. Dolan, through you, of course. The town of Bridle, uh, town, the town of Rainham still has town meeting, is the information that was given to them for their article, for their spring town meeting reflect the old numbers, or would there have to be an amend, amend, amend on the board?
I will defer to.
The total that was sent, which was still the same, that is reflective of the number that was already sent to them, so that total number that they're responsible for and their share is the same.
I just, I can't remember in their articles if they break down, if they break down the two numbers, you know, the.
Right, right, I don't know, it isn't a question either. Right, right. I don't know. It isn't a question either. But if it's just the total, the total stayed the same. So there wouldn't be a need for a change. But.
I think it's generally just the.
Total number.
But, I mean, it won't be there. So someone will amend it on the floor.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Dolan, second by Mr. Fitzgibbons. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we have public comment. Is there anyone here before I read my whole long statement that would like to address the committee? Okay, seeing none, we will open public comment at 8:32. And we will end public comment at 8:32. Okay, does anyone on the committee have any announcements? Mr. Fitzgibbons.
I'd just like to remind folks, the annual town elections in each town are coming up a week from Saturday, and encourage everybody to get out and vote for the candidates of your choice, the ballot questions of your choice. It's important to exercise the rights that Mr. Marrera has fought for us to have and that we appreciate. There's no better way to give them a good parting gift than have the great turnout at the election.
Mrs. King.
I just want to reiterate that, too. We will have, since our chair and vice chair will not be running, we will have two new members on our committee following the election. So we do have our reorganization meeting on April 26th. So we'll have a new chair, new vice chair, new committees. We will totally reorganize.
Right. And to add to that, that will be at 5:30 PM in the superintendent's conference room.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, I was out of the room when people were speaking about you. So if I may have a moment.
That's good, thanks.
When I ran six years ago, both you and Ms. Marrera really took the time to mentor me, meet with me for coffee, tell me what this was going to involve. You didn't, maybe run away and not run.
So they lied? Sorry.
But you really told me how it was, what kind of a time commitment it was. I've really enjoyed having you as a mentor these many years. Like, I came in blind as a parent. Obviously, I knew the school district from the parent side, but the admin side, the education side, I totally was Googling things after meetings. I did not know what you were talking about. So I thank you for mentoring me all those years and, you know, showing me and explaining things. And Ms. Marrera, we have had some of the best subcommittee meetings and committee meetings. You have very different opinions, but you've put it out there. You're a straight shooter. And at the end of the day, we walk away and that's it. So I appreciate that so much. You just stand for your convictions and then, you know, that's your opinion and then you leave it at the table. So I have really appreciated working with you these past years.
Thank you, Mrs. King. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, if I may, just on behalf of the district, I just want to thank you and Mr. Marrera for the students, the staff, the families, for everything that you've done. Obviously, you helped lead the district through a very difficult time during COVID. But from when you came on to now, the district is in a better place because of you two. And I just wanted to thank you on behalf of the students and staff of the district.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Okay, and just, tonight is my final school committee meeting, as you have seen. And it has been an honor and a privilege to serve the communities of Bridgewater and Rainham in this role for the past six years. Thank you to the voters of Bridgewater and Rainham for the opportunity to represent you and to work for our students and our schools. I appreciate all that the school administration, teachers, and staff do every day for our students. Our district has great leaders and we have amazing, dedicated teachers and staff. To my fellow school committee members, I wish you all nothing but the best in the years to come and deeply appreciate your dedication to our communities. I truly can't believe how amazing these people are. They have other jobs and they have families, but still volunteer their time and always make the students in our district a priority. It wasn't always perfect, but I'm proud of the work that my fellow members and I have done during my tenure on this committee. We have been able to work together to navigate the Bridgewater-Rainham Regional School District through it all, even on the issues where we began in a place of complete disagreement. Serving your community at this level is tireless and sometimes thankless, and often rife with strong suggestions and harsh criticisms from those who speak from the vantage point of deeply caring about something that personally affects them or their children. Each of you understand the need for working collaboratively and the importance of considering the needs of all members of our community, not just those with the loudest and most persistent voices. On the hardest days, please remember, you mustn't let critics prevent you from doing what you believe is right and is in the best interest of our students. While I will no longer be sitting here with you in the future, please know that each of you has earned my respect and admiration. And I will always be grateful for having the opportunity to serve with each and every one of you. I would be remiss if I did not say how grateful I was to have the support and patience and understanding my wonderful husband, John. I will remain active in the Bridgewater-Rainham Educational Foundation, where our goal is to promote, sponsor, enhance the quality of educational experiences of public school students. The foundation provides grants for teachers to bring life, creative, and impactful projects that would not otherwise be possible. Last but not least, as I reflect on my time on the school committee, I would be remiss not to thank Mrs. Judy McDougall, our recording secretary, as well as acting superintendent Ryan Powers and his team. I am just so impressed with the caliber of their work and their innovative thinking and all that they have done and have shown. BR is lucky to have such wonderful people at the helm. Thank you to BR. With that, oh, yes, Mr. Marrera.
If I could just say one thing that was beautiful. But I know, I say this for the both of us, for those that will be coming in to replace us from Bridgewater and Rainham. If I can just leave anything of parting words is, don't be afraid to speak up. Healthy debate is very important in the democratic process. I've always said that from day one. But at the end of the healthy debate, the person that debated the best is probably going to get the better votes, and that's okay. And if you're not that person that got the way you wanted, at the end of the day, we have to accept the vote and move on. And then we move on to the next task of the district and of our students. And that is what, you know, I want to leave to those coming in, is don't be afraid for healthy debate because that is what is needed in today's society. But at the end of the day, once it's done, it's done, we move on to the next task. So with that said, if you're waiting for one final motion, I would love to.
I am not, because our next scheduled school committee meeting will be held on May 17, 2023, in the Library of the Rainham Middle School. And there are two seats open on the school committee, as was mentioned, and elections will be held on April 22, 2023. I wish all the candidates well. And just a reminder that community members in both towns vote for the Bridgewater candidate as well as a Rainham candidate. Have a wonderful and restful vacation. This concludes our regular school committee meeting. I will entertain a motion on April, to adjourn on April 12, 2023, meeting at? 8:40, thank you. And convene to executive session for the purposes of Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Subsection 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, it's a personnel matter, to approve the minutes of March 29, 2023, per Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Subsection 21. And the school committee will not reconvene in an open session.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Fitzgibbons. You just took it away.
I withdraw. I withdraw.
Madam Chair, I'd love to make our final motion to adjourn our full school committee.
You may make that motion, Mr. Marrera. Do I have a second?
No, I have a second. Go for it.
Mr. Fitzgibbons, this requires a roll call vote. Mrs. Conrad Laberinto?
Aye.
Mr. Di Marino?
Aye.
Mr. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Martelli?
Aye.
Mr. Marrera?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion passes. Thank you and have.